Good evening. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting, a called meeting for March 28th. If I could ask you please to...
Okay, we're beginning our meeting. If you could please be quiet.
Okay. As I started to say, welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners called meeting for March 28th, 2016. We began with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. If everyone would please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, as we meet today, please guide us and give us knowledge and strength as we make decisions that impact our county and citizens. Please look over and help our children, our elderly, and those in need. Keep our armed forces safe as they protect us overseas and protect those who keep us safe here at home. In your name, Amen.
Okay. Okay, I'll begin with the county manager, and I would ask that you please pay close attention to his presentation, as I believe many of your concerns will likely be addressed and could affect your comments. So, Ira, if you would... Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, members of the public. I'd like to begin by saying that this is a good sign that democracy and the ability of people to be heard is still alive and well in Haywood County. I would also like to commend the commissioners for having tonight's public hearing. A revision on an ordinance, and this is a revision, does not require a public hearing for this type of ordinance. As your policy and practice, you have chosen to give in a public forum and more time for public comment, and I would like to commend you all for that. I'd also like to start, and I will during my presentation, note that we were asked to do a few things. One, I was asked to address public comments received so far as I go along, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. And two, I was asked along with Mr. Killian to revise an old chapter that's been around since 1995, and that's one of the big public comments I got. Why are you trying to do something new? We were asked to revise this to bring it up to standards with the law as it is today because there were revisions made to the gun rights, to the concealed carry and the gun rights in the state of North Carolina, both in 2011 and 2013, and our ordinance needs to be brought up to standards. So I think one of the big points of confusion, a lot of people think this is new, actually since 1995. Since 1995, 21 years, concealed and open carry have been banned on all government property. And I'm going to repeat that, since 95, concealed and open have been banned on all government property. So this isn't new, and that's a big point of confusion, I think. And the other thing is, it's only government property. We're not talking about your homes. The reason I'm going to make that point is, and why people may be confused, is a case I'm going to talk about in a minute, and it only came out in 2008, and the issue was guns in the home. And so I got that question, and then I'm going to answer some of the other public comment that we have. So we're talking about an ordinance that's been around since 1995 and trying to change it to make it comply with the present state law. Now, another question I got is, does this... Another question I got is, what about the Second Amendment? What about the Second Amendment? And I figure the best way to handle some of those questions is straight out of the gate. Well, the Second Amendment is sitting up there. Well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And the main case law in the Second Amendment, like I'm going to say, it just came down in 2008. It comes out of the District Columbia. It's Heller, District of Columbia versus Heller, and in that case, they were talking about handguns in a person's home. We're talking about a revision of an ordinance from 1995, and we're talking about on the county property. Now, the court in Heller outlined a lot of things with relation to gun rights in the Second Amendment, and some of you are probably very familiar with that. I know that's a very important case to a lot of people, and I'm only going to talk about a very, very little bit of Heller tonight, because only a very little bit applies to this situation. So they cover gun rights, and they say that it's out of this, and they parse out every single word in this, both bearing arms and not infringed. And when they cover it, they talk about how infringed means that this is a right that people already have. This doesn't come from the federal government. It's basically the right to self-defense. And it's talking about bearing arms, and they're talking about ordinary arms that people carry. And so they said, when it's talking about a home, you have the right to bear arms, and that's a 5-4 decision in 2008. What that means is you had four justices at the Supreme Court that were debating 220 years of history, and it took 220 years to get this right, debating 220 years of history, and it still came down to a 5-4 vote. That's very close. But one thing that they all would have agreed on, and I'm going to submit to you, is that the 1995 ordinance under the Second Amendment, had this gone to the Supreme Court that day, would have been a 9-0 vote supporting the amendment, and here's why. Because it's not unlimited. Nothing in the opinion, and this is Justice Scalia, this is not the dissent, this is the majority opinion, nothing in the opinion should be taken to cast doubt on the longstanding prohibitions on the possession of firearms by felons, the many ill, or laws forbidding the carrying of firearms in certain places such as schools and government buildings. Let's go to the North Carolina Constitution real quick, because I was asked to speak about what we're doing. Is it legal or not? That was one of the questions I got. No one raised the North Carolina Constitution, but there's a couple of points in here that I think they are talking about for tonight's purposes. One, Article 1, Section 30, militia and the right to bear arms. A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. And as standing armies in time of peace are dangerous to liberty, they shall not be maintained, and the military shall be kept under strict subordination to and governed by the civil power. Nothing herein shall justify the practice of carrying concealed weapons or prevent the General Assembly from enacting penal statutes against that practice. The reason this is important is if you look at the history of the law in the United States, the concealed carry rights actually come from the state general assemblies and the state legislatures. That's why this is important. So your North Carolina constitutional rights are not really at issue tonight either, but what we are talking about is your rights under the state general statutes, and that's exactly why we had to amend our ordinance. Because if you've read the state general statutes and you've looked at our ordinances side by side, you will see that in the 1995 and 2008 version, carrying, open and concealed, is banned on all county property. 21 years. And we needed to lower those restrictions to match the state statutes. Now, we could have just gone on on a technical amendment bill. Some of you don't know what that is. Just technically amended the ordinance, not had a public hearing, not done anything about it, or we can have a public hearing and say, hey, this is what we're doing. Those are your choices. But what we're really talking tonight is about state statute and trying to make a local ordinance match state statute. State constitution, it talks also that it's a restricted thing, talks about how concealed carry doesn't go to a bunch of things, and the right to carry doesn't go to submarines and airplanes, and daggers and concealed weapons. Talks about their abilities to prohibit it. So let's go to what we're really talking about after you passed Coroner 1921. What we're talking about is the North Carolina General Assembly put down a law that says statewide uniformity of local regulation, open carry. And the first thing it says is, no county or municipality by zoning or other ordinance shall regulate in a manner firearm shows with regulations more stringent than those applying to shows of other items. As I'm standing here right now, in 2008, they passed an amendment to our ordinance that does exactly that. We're not allowed to do that, and our ordinance right now says we're doing that. So again, we had to change our ordinance to make it so that it matched what the state law says, and the only way to get around that is they do firearm trade shows at the fairgrounds, they do flea markets at the fairgrounds and allow the sale of guns. The only way to get around that is say if the fairgrounds is going to have a gun show that day, our ordinance doesn't apply, because we don't restrict the sale of baked goods at the fairgrounds, and the state law says if you don't restrict the sale of pretty much anything, you can't restrict the sale of firearms there. So our ordinance won't apply. But if you look at the 1995 and 2008 versions, they apply today to the fairgrounds. So this is a change that is actually much less restrictive on that point. The other thing it prohibits, nothing contained, and this is open carry again, nothing contained in this section prohibits municipalities or counties from their application of authority under those general statutes, including prohibiting the possession of firearms in public-owned buildings, on the grounds or parking areas of those buildings, or in public parks or in recreation areas, except nothing shall prohibit a person from storing a firearm within a motor vehicle. Guess where we... Our old law, this is the state law I'm citing. This is an art ordinance. This is the North Carolina general statute we're trying to match. And I think that's a real clear distinction, because I got a lot of questions about that. Why are you trying to take away our gun rights? Actually, we're trying to expand them because the state law expanded them. In 1995, the ordinance from 1995 didn't make a locking it in the vehicle exception, so we had to change that, because the state law says you got to have an exception to storing a firearm in a motor vehicle. So we're trying to match the state law, and that's in the new ordinance. They also passed a law at the General Assembly on uniformity of concealed carry. And I do want to point out one important distinction here. Open carry, you're allowed, you know, the local government is allowed to ban open carry in a public park or recreation area, which is different from lawful concealed carry. I'm going to point out that distinction, because the job that I was charged with doing, and Mr. Killian was charged with doing, was bringing our ordinance into exact compliance with state law to the best of our ability, not changing it. That's not our job. We were told, bring it in compliance with the state law, and that's what we did. And to bring it into compliance, and y'all could have ducked this issue, and again, I applaud you for having a public hearing and doing it in this manner, but not conscious, you know, that's not good democracy to try and duck an issue. In the concealed carry, there were a couple of places that we are aligned with the state law. It says, "A local unit of government may adopt an ordinance to permit the posting of a prohibition against carrying a concealed handgun in accordance with 141511 on local government buildings, and there are pertinent premises." That means the grounds right around here. So it doesn't mean all county grounds. Now, again, in 95, they said all county grounds, way beyond a pertinent premises. We're like, we definitely need to change that. And then, "An athletic field, including any pertinent facilities such as restrooms during an organized athletic event in the field, had been scheduled for use with the municipality or county office responsible for the operation of park or recreational area." When you ban it on all grounds, we have a lot of properties. We were trying to put together a greenway a few years ago, and we have a lot of county properties that were bought, both for the flood as part of the greenway and through some other ways. Didn't get it completed, but there's a lot of properties out there, and if they're leased, it would go with the leaseholder to stop that. But under the old law, all those public spaces would be banned from carry, any type. State law doesn't allow that. Very limited amount in the state law, and that says athletic field and pertinent facilities. So if you were to compare the old statute, everything, public buildings also, and we'll get to that, but as far as open green spaces, and you were to compare the new one, the difference is this, there's one place listed, Allen's Creek Park, and I got, as well as any places that we lease specifically for athletic events. And I got a question about Allen's Creek Park. Allen's Creek Park is the only place it was purchased, and it was a joint venture, and it was purchased for soccer, and the rec program still has athletic events out there. So when you look at what we're talking about here with the athletic field thing, this is limited to the day of those events. Allen's Creek Park would be listed, and whatever you post is going to have to be limited to be within state law to the day of the events. That's how we narrowed it down to match state law. Or a swimming pool, we don't own one. Canton can deal with this issue later. They work on it. A facility used for athletic events but not limited to a gymnasium. We did put in that because we lease property from the school system to run a basketball league for kids. So we're not talking about those places all the time. The school system has its own set of rules and other things, but when they're under our direction just for those athletic events. And this is right out of the state statute, but again, we had banned it everywhere since 1995, so this is lowering that restriction. Right now, this sign is posted outside, and it's posted a lot of places in the counties for this building. So this chapter is adopted as, just as a recap, we adopted this pursuant to a number of state statutes that we read before it was written. I'm going through this in painful detail, because it was really obvious when people came to talk, or the comments that I've seen, that either myself or the commissioners got, that a lot of people didn't even realize that we were amending and not creating a new statute. We're amending an old statute to comply with state law, and also that we had actually read the state law before we did this. Again, this revises in 1995 and subsequently amended on March 3rd. The March 3rd revision was for the fairgrounds, and I'm going to just show you the way the old language would read in red, and you can look online if you want. "Unlawful and a violation of 1538," this is a new one, "for any person to possess or display firearm in or on county-owned and controlled buildings, on grounds, parking areas, sidewalks, or alleys appurtenant to those buildings, or in public parks or recreation areas, except where such firearm is locked in a vehicle." That's pretty much straight out of the general statutes. North Carolina general statutes. Before, the reason you have to amend it is because right now, our ordinance reads the 95 that any real property legally owned and controlled by the county. So we kind of have to change that to match, because that doesn't match. All property, limited amounts. That's open carry. And I will say that the building we're in, the other thing that we were asked to look at during this time period when this came up, the building we're in was a courthouse. I've tried cases here. I believe Commissioner Kirkpatrick and Mr. Killian have both tried cases here, and that designation has never been changed, so that we would have to say that since this has never been re-designated as anything but a courthouse, there is a different set of laws that applies to where we're sitting now. This is a courthouse, and the state statute, by state statute, that bans carry here. But this is talking about, you know, pretty much all the property, and that's open carry. This is open carry. Want to talk about concealed in a minute. And again, remember, concealed carry rights come out of state statutes, not just here, whether you're in Texas or Florida. You have to know the state law to know your concealed carry rights. Those are different than Second Amendment rights. And so if you're going to travel and you have a concealed carry permit, or if you're from out of state and you're sitting here and you have a second home and are interested in this topic, you might want to check the state laws on concealed carry, because that's going to vary state to state. Now we're talking about concealed carry, and I'll run through this real quick, because we talked about Allen's Creek, but also talk about the other question I got, because it's real important here. "It shall be unlawful and a violation of General Statute 141523 for any person to carry concealed in county-owned and controlled buildings, and there are pertinent premises and on the following county-owned and/or controlled recreational facilities, except where such handgun is secured and a locked vehicle is provided by General Statute 141523B. Allen's Creek Park, Haywood County School-owned buildings, appurtenant athletic fields, and properties which have been leased to the county school for recreational ventures, which school and county athletic events are conducted." The reason Allen's Creek Park is there is it's the only property that you own that meets the state statute definition that's an outside property, as far as, that does not have a building on it. That would be a public park, open space, greenway. So any of your other open space, greenway, if we ever get to greenway-constructed properties, don't meet the state statute definition. And Allen's Creek Park, and I think you have to have, if you look at the state statute, only during time periods when there's an athletic event, only those days. So it'd have to be a very specific type posting. And again, this is North Carolina law on concealed carry and how this would match. The 95, 2008 version applies on any real property owned and controlled by Haywood County, so you pretty much, if you want to match North Carolina state law, you have to change it. Going to mention another thing related to this, and that's that, got a question about convenience centers. Somebody said that, "I've got a concealed carry permit. I want to drop my trash at the convenience center. I don't want that banned." This doesn't ban it, because there's not what we would call a building at the convenience center. That's a trash dumpster. You can take your trash to the convenience center and drop off your trash, if you've got a concealed carry permit, which you conceal, if you can lawfully carry. So that's a question I got. I did just want to answer it. We're talking about buildings and their appurtenant premises. And again, what buildings are we talking about? We're talking like the Paragon Parkway facility with this Health and Human Services and the appurtenant properties, and this is concealed carry with a lawful permit. This is a much smaller piece of ground than your ordinance presently covers. Fairgrounds. You had a whole amendment in 2008 on the fairgrounds. Gun shows needed a limited permit exemption and stuff like that. You can't do permit exemptions under the state law. Basically, if the fairgrounds is going to hold a gun show or anything like that in those buildings, your ordinance just can't apply that day. Posting of signs. The main difference here, and I'm just going to go really quickly, you've got the 95 version, which again talks about posting on everything. The posting that would be done here would have to be very narrowly specific to your buildings, it would have to be, and if you posted down Allen's Creek Park, that posting would need to be changed to allow controlled carry or concealed carry during times when there's not, on days there's not athletic events. So I thank you all for your time and attention to this. I know that there's a fairly long list to speak on this topic in particular. So thank you for your time and attention, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you, Ira. Okay, as Ira said, while we're not legally required to have a public hearing tonight on these matters, we want to be as transparent as possible, and we have historically done that, and we're doing it again tonight. One hour of comment is allotted for each ordinance under consideration. Comments can additionally be made by telephone, email, US mail. I received 250, 300 emails in the last few days, so those have all been catalogued and will be made part of the official record of this public hearing. And any additional comments made by any of the methods I mentioned will also be catalogued and documented as part of the record. I would ask that no one speak unless authorized and recognized by the chair. Comments will be limited to three minutes. There's a little timer up here. It's got a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. So when that goes off, that will be the end of the comment session. And I would also ask that there be no outbursts from the audience. This is a public hearing, and in the past, we've had some people that were apparently overtaken by emotion. We would ask that everyone be considerate and polite. We will not answer questions tonight. We're here to gather information, to hear what you have to say, and no vote will be taken tonight. At the earliest, the vote would be taken to be April 4th, and we'll determine by what we heard tonight, how many changes there would need to be made as to whether or not we'd be ready to vote on that date or not, but it'll be posted on the agenda. Ira, were there organizations represented tonight that have spokespeople?
The organizations would be designated on your list that you have.
I don't have a list. Those in attendance who have not communicated by phone or email with the county government will be given the first opportunity to speak. That's the reason we had two sign-up sheets. Okay, I'll do the best I can to decipher some of the handwriting on here. First off is Grassroots North Carolina. Looks like Paul Vallone. Is that right?
My name is Paul Vallone, and I direct Grassroots North Carolina since 1994, our state's main gun rights organization. I'm here to advise you that your proposed ordinance restricting display and carry of firearms is not only a move in the wrong direction, but also a violation of state law, which could saddle Haywood County citizens with a cost of litigation you cannot win. This list of regulations for Allen's Creek Park, which I drew from your website, prohibits all firearms. As your county manager correctly noted, that no longer complies with state law. As enacted by the General Assembly in Session Law 2011-268 and further modified by Session Law 2013-369, local governments may not prohibit lawful concealed carry in whole parks, but only in narrowly-defined recreational facilities. Although your proposed ordinance 96.04 attempts to rectify the problem by redefining Allen's Creek Park as a recreational facility, under North Carolina General Statute 1441523, it does not meet that definition. The definition of athletic facility is limited to athletic fields during scheduled events, swimming pools, and gymnasiums. In fact, subsection D says, "For the purposes of this section, the term recreational facility does not include any greenway designated or biking or walking path, area customarily used as a walkway or bike path, although not specifically designated for such use, open areas or fields where athletic events may occur." So essentially, you're banning throughout the entire park, and regardless of whether you do it only during times of scheduled athletic events, you can't do that. I also urge you to become familiar with the new subsection E added in 2015, which allows a person adversely impacted by this to seek injunctive relief, not only, pardon me, not only injunctive relief, but also court costs and damages if they are adversely impacted by an illegal ordinance. In short, if you attempt to unlawfully restrict concealed carry in parks, we will sue you, and we will win. We passed concealed carry in 1994, since which time concealed handgun permit holders, now numbering nearly 400,000, have proven themselves sane, sober, and law-abiding. Despite the wording of your ordinance, you have no reason to be concerned, as it says, about their presence. In fact, since we passed concealed carry, violent crime statewide has dropped by 47% because criminals, violent sociopaths, and even terrorists don't want to encounter armed victims. Now, just because you've banned guns on county property since 1995 doesn't mean you should. Instead of creating victim disarmament zones, which attract violent predators, Haywood County should join 12 other counties: Alamance, Ash, Cabarrus, Cherokee, Craven, Forsyth, Lenore, Pitt, Person, Rowan, Union, and Wilkes, all of which have removed concealed carry restrictions on county facilities. Concealed carry saves lives. I strongly urge you to take a step forward by allowing lawful permit holders to defend themselves and their families. Thank you.
Okay, there you are. All right.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity. My name is Jess Dunlap, and I'm the Chair of the Haywood County Libertarian Party. I'm also a... I'm also a gender queer, and for those of you unfamiliar with the term, it's a shade of transgender. In both of those capacities, I am radical in the belief of our right to bear arms anytime and anywhere as an eligible gun owner. The world is already unsafe for people like me. Contrary to popular belief, it isn't transgender folks committing acts of perversion in public restrooms, but overwhelmingly, trans individuals who are victims of violence, violence with deep misunderstanding at its roots. Notice that with new violence, the transgender folks are emboldened by measures such as HB2, Raleigh's effort to police genitalia, a prime example of government making a mess is a prime to do. One thing that gives me some peace of mind navigating our society's rigid gender norms is my right to bear arms, my inalienable right and duty to defend myself. County property is a place many of us must routinely visit, and it seems unfair to force anyone to relinquish that right to self-defense upon entering a building, or property, any property, where their presence is at times compulsory. Someone like myself not only forfeits self-defense upon entering county property, but is also a highly visible target of anti-trans ire as I exit a women's restroom on county property which HB2 requires. Another vulnerable position I am placed in is that a majority of the time, I ride a bicycle. If I can't concealed carry on the county property, the ordinance proposed allows for locking of the firearm in one's car. What are the options for a person without a car to lock their gun in? I urge overturning, as the fellow before me with the grassroots organization, any restrictions on gun owners who, as he said, are sane, sober, and law abiding. If anyone has any questions about the Libertarian Party platform, I'll be available after the meeting. Thank you.
Y'all can pass all the ordinances you want until they go before a judge and they are found to be a law, they're still disordinances. And you have nobody that will go along with them. But listen to this, this went in. The Supreme Court held that an employee working for a sheriff are not county employees, even though the sheriff's office gets their funding from the county taxes. The court noted that the office of the sheriff is defined in the state constitution. The General Assembly has recognized the innate nature of the position, and only a sheriff has the statutory authority to hire and fire employees. In light of this state discrimination between county government and the office of the sheriff, we conclude that a sheriff's office is not a program or department of a county, and agree with the consent holding of the Court of Appeals that a deputy sheriff or employees of a sheriff's office is not a county employee, wrote Justice Robert Edmund of the High Court. So until you take these to court, and it's ruled that these ordinances are a law, the sheriff does not have to abide by them.
Franklin McKenzie.
As been previously mentioned, been a great increase in concealed carry permit issuance. Concealed permits are quite a liability and responsibility to possess. Misuse has not been recorded, documented by any incidents in this county, I'm not aware, and I've talked to law enforcement, and nothing has been stated as such. Those individuals that are involved in open carry, which is a lightly described situation, again, responsible citizens performing open carry, again, have not been recorded as documented illegal actions or offenses. So I see no reason why this, the massive increase is nothing more than, and is so much more than, a way of securing our society, our citizens, our homes, our neighbors, the community as a whole. Eliminating or controlling the rights of the citizens creates discontent. And in this instance, I think that's the thing that's going to show if this bill, this regulation, this ordinance, your attempted making law you pass in next week, and it will be reflected in November, I'm sure, for a few of you individuals on the commission here. I have been aware that a number, or a couple of least of you are, have voiced the opinion against this. So the slight changes, as they seem to be, though they may be in line with the state, the state's ability to make uniform coverage of the lawless, give, just one statute after another after another after another for you, the county, to not perform as the state has. So there are no uniform regulations. As such, there should not be anything other than one regulation. Our state is a sovereign state, our county is the same. We are citizens, taxpayers, landowners, and as such, we expect you to respond to our opinions. Hopefully, you will designate this as a no-go vote. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm Representative Michelle Presnell, and I researched this ordinance, I looked it out through and through, and as he was saying about Allen's Creek Park, General Statute 14-415-23 allows local governments to restrict concealed carry in specifically identified recreational facilities, except that concealed handgun permits must be allowed to secure a handgun in a locked vehicle. However, the definition of recreational facilities in that statute specifically does not include walking paths and does not include open fields, except when they are being used for specific purposes that meet the definition in that statute of athletic field. It appears to me that the park, in fact, I went over there this afternoon to see how, exactly how it was laid out, and I really did like the park. I actually met a couple there that were walking around, some girls that were disabled in a wheelchair. And it appears to me that the park has both the walking path all the way around it and several multipurpose fields. General Statute 14415-23 does not allow the county to prohibit concealed carry on that walking path or on the fields when they are not being used as an athletic field. Section 9604 of the ordinance appears to prohibit concealed carry on the property of Allen's Creek Park in its entirety at all times, except for the locked vehicle exception. I'm asking you to please take that part out of it, but I would love it if you would just get rid of the whole thing. You know?
Thank you. As an open carry person, I feel like when you tell me I can't carry my weapon on government property, you're violating my rights. Now, I understand police officers, they carry their weapon on that property, who's to say that they're not crazy? I mean, you know, I carry mine for protection. I'm a handicapped person. There's times I'm out walking, dogs attack me, or wildlife could attack me, and I want to be able to protect myself. And with you saying, no, you can't open carry on the parks, Allen's Creek, well, you know, that's not right down in the middle of Wayne's Way. But if I'm not mistaken, we've had bears down here on Main Street. And if I can't open carry on government grounds, you know, it's crazy. Because there's a piece of paper up there in Washington DC that says I can carry to protect myself, and that's why I carry a gun, is to protect myself. But y'all are trying to choke me down to where I can't protect myself. And I ask that y'all get rid of this. Because there's other counties that have gotten rid of it, so let's get rid of it out of Haywood County. You know, let our county grow, and I think, you know, that would help. With that, I say thank you.
Hey, guys, thanks for letting me come up here. Glad everybody turned out tonight, this is awesome. When I came up here the first time, I said I was torn about the ordinance because I hadn't really studied it. This thing stinks, guys, man. I know it's an improvement from what it was, but it still stinks. It does. We got to get rid of this. Let's go with constitutional carry. Let's just do away with it. Second Amendment is your right to carry, period, open, concealed, it doesn't matter. What this guy said right here, y'all don't have good luck with lawsuits, y'all lose a lot of them. We end up paying it because of y'all's decisions. We're tired of it, guys. Tired of it. Give us some freedom, we need it. I am a concealed carry, and I'll protect every single one of you, including myself, with the firearm I carry. Mark, I'd almost bet you're carrying right now. Have a good night.
For the record, I comply with all laws, I am not carrying a firearm. I carried one for 32 years, and I don't want to ever carry another one.
Thank you for this opportunity. I have two things I want to talk about. One is, as a teacher, ex-teacher, I would have loved the security of having been trained to carry, maybe not in the classroom, but in my locker, in my purse, so I could protect the children. If you have not read this book... If, and I was attacked by children, so I know what I'm talking about. If you have not read this book, gentlemen, please get it. I know a cute little store owner back there who will sell it to you. Her name is Jan Starett. It's a wonderful book, and it's about children and the attacks that come on them, and nobody can stop them because they have no guns. All right, the other thing is, quickly, are you, are you going to agree? Our freedoms are waning, and we'll lose our liberty. Sleeping one by one till there's nothing left to see. Are you, are you willing to stand with me? Are you, are you just going to let it be? The ranchers are the first, but brother, next, it may be me. We'll all stand together, or we'll hang separately. Are you, are you going to the tree? Are you, are you willing to be free? It won't get any easier to regain lost liberty. Strange things are happening in this land that once was free. So brother, I ask, are you going to stand with me? This is a song that the Daughters of Lavoie Finicum wrote in honor of their father. May God bless America again.
It's my way, I have to follow the teacher. Get showed up again. I was, I didn't know about this meeting till yesterday, my neighbor told me about it. And I just want to talk briefly just about concealed weapon permit and how it's benefited me. Our house got broken into probably several years ago. We had some young daughters then, had grown up, but I always said, well, I wished I was there whenever they were, whenever they broke in our house. And the deputy told me, no, Joe, you wish, you'd be glad that you weren't there. Well, since then, I have carried a concealed weapon, not now, but I do feel more secure when I do have a concealed weapon. And I find it necessary, I wrote me a few notes here, I feel it necessary to protect my grandchildren especially, and other family members. Finally, I feel a strong about the Second Amendment to bear arms, and I feel to infringe. How many times tonight have you heard infringe? I counted, I believe there's about eight or nine times infringe. You know what infringe means? That means restrict or limit the possession of a farm. Do you want this to happen, to restrict or limit your farm? I think it's unconstitutional. And finally, one of my favorite movies is Lonesome Dove, and one part of Lonesome Dove that says, it's talking about guns, and they said, if you got a gun, it's always better to have a gun and never need it, than need it and never have it.
My name's Eddie Cabe, I lived here in Haywood County for 57 years. I'm one of those people that believe that my rights come from God Almighty Himself. He gave me the right to protect my family. The only thing the Constitution does is confirm that right, those inalienable rights given to me by my Creator. And it seems like as long as the five of you have been around, it's been one right after the other that you've tried to take. And you've got a terrible record with these ordinances, three of them on the table tonight. The one ordinance that disturbs me the most is the emergency management ordinance, where you say that you have the right to come into my home during state of emergency and take my clothes, my clothes, my food, my weapons. Sarls here has even put it in the newspaper a couple of times. He said, if you can't trust the government, who can you trust? And he said, and Mr. Sarls said that in the state of emergency... And he said, and Mr. Sarls said that, uh, in the state of emergency, we certainly couldn't have everybody going around with a gun, because then you would not be able to tell the good guys and the bad guys apart. Well, we've had many meetings over this emergency management ordinance, and y'all have promised, and promised, and promised it's going to be rewritten. You said send in your comments and suggestions, and hundreds of them were sent in, and yet no answer. During this state of emergency, the county manager is the one that has the power, according to the ordinance, to fire the sheriff. But now I've talked to the sheriff about this many times, and had meetings with him with hundreds of people, he certainly don't agree with it. And you have failed on your promise to rewrite the emergency management ordinance to where it obeys the Constitution of the United States of America. And until you can get that one right, I really fear the rest of these you're trying to rub out here. Uh, I also have a nineteen-year-old daughter, and she walks these parks and jogs. It just ain't right, what you're trying to do, to take her right to carry, or anybody's right to carry. That's all I got to say.
My name's Terry Ramey, and about, I guess it's been ten years ago at least, I went to get a concealed, uh, concealed weapon permit. The business I'm in, I deal with all kinds of people every single day. And I might tow a vehicle in for a DUI, or drug charge, or something like that, and I have to already deal with these people when they come and pick these vehicles up. That the sheriff's department, town law, highway patrol, somebody's arrested. They're always upset when they come back. If I run into these people anywhere in town, I'm not worried about myself, but my family might catch repercussions from it. And that's the reason I got a concealed weapon permit about ten years ago. And if y'all start limit this where I can carry my weapon, you've never seen me get out here and shoot nobody. I had to go through training and meet all requirements to get this concealed weapon permit. The sheriff had to do a background check on me to get this permit. If you don't trust the people that have went through all these background checks and everything, who would you rather be protecting if you had to have some kind of protection? If I can't carry, when I go to, say, for perfect example, go to the park, or the fire ground or somewhere, what if I confront some of these people that I've had to tow in for the police, or the sheriff, or the highway patrol? That's upsetting me for towing their car in. Are y'all gonna tell me that I just have to go out there and just fight with them hand to hand on the property? Then I'd be in trouble. I don't understand how y'all can take that right away from me. What I, what I do for a living is to help the public just as much as just like being the sheriff's department or something else, they do their job, I work right along with them towing these vehicles in and stuff. But you're asking me not to have no protection against these people. The sheriff, the, the police department, they've got a weapon, they can protect theirselves because these people, if they're mad at them, I just don't understand why, law-abiding citizens, y'all don't want them carrying, to protect all the people. If you fell into bind somewhere, would you not want somebody to have a gun that could help you if somebody had a gun on you somewhere? Or something like that? I just don't understand the reason for this, period. It's just that, that's the right we've got, and we went through training, like I say, background checks and everything to get these, the concealed weapon permits. That's just like you're taking it that we don't mean nothing, just, even though we're law-abiding citizens, we still don't have a right to do what we paid and went through training to do. And I'm asking you that, that right there, I think is a bad wrong. And I appreciate it.
James Smathers.
Just say three minutes or thirty minutes here. I'm James Smathers, been in Haywood County all my life. Uh, how many veterans we got in here today? Tons of us, alright. You know, it's okay to put us on a bus in Haywood County and send us somewhere, I've carried weapons on a C-130. A lot of you guys been in combat, you've given everything for these rights, and I'm standing with you. I think the county, Haywood County by the way, has more volunteers for military service than any state in the United States per capita, every war, check the facts. I'm proud to be a Haywood County resident. Uh, I preach the gospel, just three weeks ago in Ohio, a man walks in a pulpit, shoots a pasture. It's a shame that you have to carry one in a pulpit, but you do nowadays. I'm okay with that, had guns all my life, and like the rest of my brothers and sisters here, I've had guns all my life, we don't commit crimes. All the laws you make, all the ordinance you pass, a criminal's not going to pay any attention to them, they never have, that's why there's courthouses. We had the young lady here earlier, yes she has rights, she was talking about her persuasion of her gender. We protect those rights too, don't agree with it, but I will die defending someone else's rights in this country, that's what we're made of, that's what we are, that's what we are in Haywood County. But as a Christian, as a Spirit-filled Christian, I'm a minority, I'm a minority everywhere I go. People hate us, it's okay to make fun of us on the news, it's okay to make fun of us in every television program. So I've got rights, and I do, I don't fear for my safety, but I have three granddaughters, and you can bet your nose, I'm gonna take care of those granddaughters and my wife. I'm gonna defend what's mine, and I'm gonna defend what's yours. But you know, we've got to have some common sense here, these ordinances, none of this is common sense, and it does need to go away, it's insane. Uh, we're taxed to death in Haywood County, we get nothing for it. We got some of the best law enforcement in the state, but hey, they're ill-equipped sometimes, they can't always be where they need to be. In our churches now, we form security teams, they have an active shooter class in Henderson County, the Henderson County Sheriff is putting on right now, I'm probably gonna go to it, the cost is six hundred dollars, but if I can protect the children in our church, yes I'm gonna do it. We've got to wake up in this country, and it starts in meetings like this. And I thank the public for coming, thank God for everyone of you here, man, I'm with you, we gotta stick together, we gotta go all the way to Washington with this, it can't just stop here. We've gotta stick together, and we gotta make the changes, we have to be vigilant, just like our forefathers were, that's why we've got the freedom to speak here. It's not just a favor, it's our right, it's our right to be here, it's our right to be heard, and our right to stand up for what we believe in, and what this country was founded on. God, guns, and guts, let's keep all three.
Thank you for hearing me. I heard about this meeting about fifteen minutes till five. Left work early to get here, I know we left out a lot of the working folks that couldn't make it. I just want to urge each and every one of you to listen to the county, listen to the people. You've heard a lot of great comments, I can't compare, I can't speak like they do, I can't, I can't compare with what they say, but listen to the public, listen to the people. Haywood County has, the commissioners have made some very poor decisions. Please, listen to the people, correct some of those problems, some of those issues. Thank you very much.
Chris Estep, or Eastep? Sorry if I mispronounced it.
Oh, Eastep, that's fine.
Eastep, okay.
Good evening commissioners, my name is Chris Eastep, I'm a lifelong citizen of Haywood County, and I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to the proposed changes to this ordinance. Uh, I appreciate you having the time tonight for us to come out and express our concerns, and I appreciate the county manager walking through the ordinance to alleviate questions, but I think that there's still some concerns that remain. Uh, the Social Science Research Network estimates that the number of concealed carry permits in the US riz, rose from four point six million in 2007 to twelve point eight million in 2015. Uh, the numbers continue to grow as concerned citizens see the need to be willing and able to protect themselves, their families, and their neighbors. It's stated in the ordinance that the reason for this ordinance is, quote, "The Board of Commissioners is concerned about the increased presence of concealed handguns on county property, and about the threat that such increased presence will pose to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community," end quote. If you as the commissioners are truly concerned about safety, then I believe you should be eager to have the responsible citizens of this county prepared and able to help provide protection should the needs arise. It is precisely for this reason I believe this ordinance should be taken away, and a new ordinance drafted that opens concealed carry in more areas on county property, if not all the areas. Uh, law enforcement, who I love and support, unfortunately can't be everywhere at every time. I've been involved in public service through the fire department since I was fourteen years old, and I know that when a call comes into 911, there's sometimes a lapse of five, ten minutes between the time when that call comes in, and emergency workers arrive on the scene. With that in mind, why not allow those who have taken a class, shot a gun under supervision, undergone a background check, why would they not be allowed to carry a weapon in order to be a help in that gap in time? The ordinance also states, quote, "It shall be unlawful in violation of General Statute 153A-129 for any person to possess or display a firearm in or on county-owned and controlled buildings, on grounds, parking areas, sidewalks, or alleyways appertuent to these buildings, or in public parks or recreation areas, except where such a firearm is located and a vehicle is provided in General Statute," end quote. It was said that this ordinance was lowering what the previous ordinance had, and that wouldn't include convenience centers, because those convenience centers don't have buildings. What about the convenience center in Clyde? They have a lot of buildings there. The other convenience centers that are located throughout the county may not have what you consider a building today, because they're just sheds that the workers stay in, but who's to say those won't be considered buildings tomorrow and then fall under this statute? But what I've stated still includes the area around the courthouse. So am I to understand that if I park in the courthouse parking deck and I walk across the grounds, because that's county property, appertuent to the building, that I would be in violation of the ordinance because I'm using the sidewalk to get from the parking deck to the sidewalks and Main Street? I encourage you to do what you are elected to do, uh, listen to the citizens of Haywood County, and I would encourage you to open concealed carry in, carry in more areas on county property.
Alan Davis.
I'm Alan Davis, and, uh, been a lifelong resident of Haywood County, seven generations in Haywood County, and I'm pastor of Woodland Baptist Church. I want to say, first of all, I'm here to speak against this ordinance, uh, it can be opened up, it can be amended, much more. Twelve counties have amended it to allow open carry, and also concealed carry. I'm here speaking for both open carry and concealed carry. Uh, as a citizen of Haywood County, I am offended, and I am embarrassed by even the thought of these, both these ordinances, the one in ninety-five, I find it highly offensive, and I find this one highly offensive against the citizens, the God-fearing and legal, law-abiding citizens of this county. It says you do not trust the county citizens to carry handguns that's been okay by your high sheriff. Now, either you don't trust the sheriff, and you don't trust the citizens, or you just don't trust the citizens. It has to be one of those two. The, one of our founding fathers says, fear the government that fears your guns. One of the people who signed the Constitution by the way, which I think probably carries quite a bit more authority and weight in what the Constitution really said than anybody said in here today, even with a law degree. And so, I'm offended that you would find law-abiding citizens that have committed a crime, that you are concerned that they're carrying guns. Oh my, they're exercising their Second Amendment, oh, that should shake us up, that should make us afraid. You're acting on fear, you're responding with fear, this is unfounded fear. We do not need leaders to respond in fear, we need leaders to respond in bold leadership and become statesmen once again in the United States. At Woodland Baptist Church, we have open carry, or concealed carry, I don't care as long as they've been trained. In fact, anytime anybody comes in firing, Brother James, anytime it's somewhere that comes firing in at the pulpit at Woodland Baptist, they'll have anywhere from eight to twenty handguns pointed at them. I'm probably the most protected pastor in this county, and I applaud those people. I tru, I trust, I trust the citizens of Haywood County, I trust the members of my church, three hundred and some odd members. No matter what the state and county laws say, the Constitution is the final law of the land. One, you can take the constitutional rights, you can take this one, and what's to say? Here's my concern as a pastor and a preacher on the street, because I street preach, and I preach on Haywood County property many times. Why, if you can take this right from me, this Second Amendment, what says you can't take my First Amendment right and say it's because of safety also? There is absolutely, there is absolutely no difference. If you take, it is a slippery slope. Benjamin Franklin said this, he said, "He would give up his liberty for a little bit of safety, deserves neither safety nor liberty."
Bill Putnam.
Not much is to be added to what's already been said that I hadn't thought about myself. I'm surprised to see that up there from you people too. But anyway, I've been around guns all my life, went in the military, expert, and all the weapons there, and wherever I've gone, I've been around weapons, and weapons do save lives, they don't kill. It's idiots that, I have to admit, when you pass laws like this, you become idiots too. You only need to respond to what the majority wants, and I don't believe that you really think, or should not think, that the people of the United States, or even Haywood County especially, are so dumb that you might be able to push this law off on them. I strongly encourage people to vote against it if it comes to a vote, and if it don't come to a vote, you all should be, you know what, gotten rid of. But anyway, my, my point is, if I can do what I've done, and I'm in pretty bad shape physically, legally blind, walking on my own, but I'm getting around, right at eighty years old, but guns have never been, you're taking a little bit of our privacy, I mean right away, a little bit now, and a little bit later, and before long, there won't be any concealed weapons law. You take a little bit at a time. Our federal government's doing it, they've been doing it for years, you're at, I'd say, the lower level of government, but you're our government, and you're elected government, basically. You take it a little bit too, before you know, bottom down, bottomed up, top down, and we've got no law anymore. So we'll have to, but we do have the right, a right to bear arms, and I'll defend it to the death, I'd even keep units from getting shot. I'd protect you folks. And if you can't see that the guns laws are only for the criminals, I don't think you should be sitting up there.
Thank you. I just learned about this meeting, and I did not have time to research it, and I don't know all the legal mumbo jumbo behind it, but I would first of all, like to give an applause to all my former speakers, because I agree with every one of them, with everything that they have said. And I urge you, the commissioners of Haywood County, to get with this gentleman right here, find out what the legal procedure is, what it takes to do what the counties that he has mentioned and brought up, to allow the legal carrying of firearms in this county, without the restrictions that this proposed ordinance is proposing. And I, one other thing occurs to me, when this word gets out, uh, what's it gonna do? Well, it's gonna open up all these county properties to these would-be criminals to come in there, because they know there's not gonna be any, any resistance there for them, be easy target for them. So I wish you would, uh, listen to what the people have said here, get with this gentleman right here, learn what procedures that you have to go through to adopt the ordinance that the counties that he has mentioned, and please... the counties that he has mentioned, and please, do that. Like I say, I haven't, didn't have time to go through all the legal mumbo jumbo, which, that's what most of it is, isn't it, mumbo jumbo? And, forget about the politics for one time and just do what is right for the people of this county. Thank you.
John Trol.
Well, I'm his wife, and like many women, I have something to say. I just wanted to say, so many passionate people have spoken. I'm a grandmother, and I have three little grandboys that I take care of almost every day, and they're with me so much of the week, and I am so grateful for my concealed carry permit, that I have the opportunity to protect my grandchildren every time they're with me, and to protect myself when I am home by myself. So I just appeal to you to, please, don't impose on us any more restrictions than are absolutely required by state law. We're law-abiding citizens, and we want to obey the law. We are good people that just want to take care of ourselves and our families. So I ask to, please, repeal anything that is not absolutely necessary, and hear the people that are speaking here tonight. Thank you.
I hope I don't mispronounce this too badly. Adrian Pauleta?
Yeah.
Is that right? Wow.
Good evening, gentlemen. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Commissioners Sorrells, Ensley, Swanger, Kirkpatrick, and Upton, imagine your wife, your daughter, or granddaughters, or grandsons, walking through a county park, and let's say they're old enough to have had training. Would you reconsider your decision of this ordinance if they were attacked, raped, shot at, would you rather them have been prepared for that situation? Attempting to restrict our right, the citizenry's right, in any way for our constitutionally given Second Amendment right and our personal protection on county government even so, would only make innocent people vulnerable to criminals. As has been said all night, criminals do not follow laws, ordinances, or whatnot. The fact is, locations with restrictions on personal protection and our rights to carry have always been shown to be the most vulnerable areas of attack. How about supporting an ordinance to expand our rights to protect ourselves and county government? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and the citizen patriots that I am so proud to share this room with, this is an awesome turnout tonight. Thank you all very much for coming, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. I wish I had thought of what Mr. Vallone suggested, that we just get rid of it. It makes sense. Unfortunately, I hadn't thought of that, so the points that I have to speak on address, perhaps giving it a little bit more reasonable scope. Concealed carry permit holders are not a crime problem. In fact, studies show that they're involved in crime at a lower rate than police officers. Imagine that. And I mean no offense to any who might be present, because we've got a lot of fine men from the Haywood County Sheriff's Office here, and that was not men, as a comment on them at all. In Florida, over the life of their program, they've issued over 200, 2.64 million concealed carry permits. 168, or six thousandths of one percent of those, were revoked for violations, in most cases where somebody inadvertently went into one of those places they weren't supposed to go with a concealed weapon, not due to violent crime. As permits have risen by 130% among the adult population from 2007 to 2013, murder rates fell 22%. Gun-free zones have proven very ineffective at deterring people with criminal intent. You ever hear somebody going, "Well, I'd like to rob a bank," they've got that, no concealed weapons sign on the front, so I'm going to go rob McDonald's instead. Doesn't happen. Since 1950, all but two mass shootings in the United States have taken place where the general population is prohibited from carrying guns. Since 1950, all but two. What a lot of folks in this room already know, what stops a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. Now, Mr. Dove has pointed out for us very ably and clearly that the North Carolina general statutes that I spent quite a bit of time looking at today myself, clearly do authorize you to have such an ordinance. They say you can, they say you may, they do not say you should. And I would like for you to think about whether or not you really should, just consider that in our surrounding states and North Carolina, there are 2.2 million, over, two and a quarter million concealed carry holders. What message are you going to send them about Waynesville? What message will you send to the million and a quarter in the state of Florida? Think about this very carefully. Are you really making people safer? What are these people telling you? No. Thank you all very much for your time.
Denver Stevens.
Thank you, guys, for hearing all everybody's opinions, appreciate it. I'm not much of a public speaker, and most everybody's already said what I was wanting to say. I think I did hear you say that you weren't carrying and you don't ever want to carry, is that correct?
Yeah.
I can understand that, but we live in an evil world, and we have to protect ourselves. I don't like to carry, I'm a concealed carry holder, it's very uncomfortable, I don't enjoy it, I've got four kids, and I feel it's my obligation to protect them. I've got 38 pages of things, if y'all would like to, I'd like to share it with y'all, look at your, on your own time, of reasons to allow carrying of weapons. You guys are public officials, I feel it's your moral obligation and ethical obligation to listen to the people that you represent. And I don't know how many people are in here that are not for the gun carrying, I mean, if y'all want to raise your hands to see how many are against carrying concealed, anybody want to raise their hand? Nobody against it showed up tonight, so listen to the people, please.
Meredith Mayer.
Hi again, my name is Meredith Mayer. I've lived in our county for over 23 years. I'm thankful for the opportunity as a citizen of our proud country to speak boldly for myself, my family, the unborn child I carry, and the law-abiding citizens of this county. Why would you choose to pass an ordinance that would further endanger the safety of the citizens of this county? We face enough safety concerns in a country that's growing morally numb and careless to the well-being of anyone but themselves, and we are now being faced with a proposal from you that would infringe on our rights as morally compassed citizens. We've been given privileges to carry concealed handguns because we are upstanding citizens, free of criminal record. If you pass this ordinance, we will still be the ones abiding by the law, but those who have no regard for the law will be the ones carrying guns onto property, potentially causing harm to us, while you, the county commissioners, will have left us law-abiding citizens completely defenseless. Thomas Jefferson said, "The laws that forbid the carrying of arms are laws such a nature; they disarm only those who are neither inclined nor determined to commit crimes. Such laws make things worse for the assaulted and better for the assailants. They serve rather to encourage than to prevent homicides, for an unarmed man may be attacked with greater confidence than one who is armed." A few statistics disturb your thoughts. Guns are used by law-abiding citizens 2.5 million times a year in self-defense, or roughly 6,850 times a day. This means that each year, firearms are used more than 80 times more often to protect the lives of honest citizens than to take lives. As many as 200,000 women use a gun each year to defend themselves against sexual abuse. George Mason said, "To disarm the people is the most effectual way to enslave them." And Thomas Jefferson said, "What country can preserve its liberties if their rulers are not warned from time to time that their people preserve the spirit of resistance? Let them take arms." So taking note from Thomas Jefferson and George Mason, I'm appealing to you to take warning. Please choose to cast your vote in favor of those who make this community a safe and prosperous place. Please do not enslave me, my children, or the law-abiding citizens of this county by taking away our Second Amendment right to bear arms and protect ourselves against those who have no regard for justice or value for human life. And may I remind you, when you swore an oath and took office as a commissioner for this county, you solemnly swore to maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
Thank you. I can't top anything that anyone has said. On the third sentence of 9602, citizens have the right to obtain permits to carry concealed handguns as provided by, or in GS 14-1415.11. We have that right. I guess the majority of us have taken the training. I've been trained in two states for concealed carry. I carry a weapon for the same reason police carry a weapon, self-protection, for me, my family, or anybody to my presence that I feel obligated to help. Okay? The next part of this says, and this kind of, this gentleman over here, I believe, said this already, but we're given up front that the whole purpose is us to bring it in to the states, in line with the state. It says, "Recent changes in the laws will significantly increase the number of individuals who may legally carry concealed handguns." The next one bites me. "The Board of Commissioners is concerned about the increased presence of concealed handgun, handguns on county property, and about the threat that such increased presence will pose to the health, safety, and general welfare of the community." That's their concern. They'll be in the castle, we'll be outside. They have police protection, we do not. The, it kind of, it gets to me to think about that, because as this gentleman had explained, the number of concealed permits that have been issued in this county, in this state, Florida, which I was originally licensed in, is incredible. The number of people that are involved in illegal shootings are not the ones with concealed permits. They're not the ones that are breaking these laws. The proof is out there in FBI reports, state reports, et cetera. So, as far as what you're doing, you do it. You're taking away my ability to protect myself on a sidewalk out there, or out here on a parking lot, if you enact this. It's what it amounts to. I don't see it, it doesn't make sense. It's been said before. Those who abide by the law are sworn to take and act accordingly to what they're trained to do, will do it. Those who don't care, won't. They don't. Are the concealed carry people the ones that have committed these murders, these shootings? No. You better rely on these, because if you, excuse, if you guys are with me, and I'm out in the street in a safe place where I'm legally able, and you're not armed, and something happens, should I walk away and leave you there? Or should I take a feeling of responsibility to help you? There's sheep, there's wolves, and there's sheepdogs. What are you? I hope you see, from all the testimony that's been given here, see some light on this and reconsider. Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't vote.
Oh, he's only the last, okay. Harvey Morse.
I'm speaking from a little different perspective, perhaps, and that is, I'm a retired assistant police chief. I am a concealed weapons instructor in the state of Florida and in the state of North Carolina, and I consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to teach people how to safely carry and use firearms. I don't know of any place that has more ordinances or more restrictions than the United States Capitol. Today, there was an active shooter situation at the visitor center at the United States Capitol. I don't really see the sense in passing ordinances that people won't follow, that are meaningless. To spend money and create a park and create a magnet for people to bring their families to and to enjoy, and then take away the right for them to protect themselves while they're there, seems to be in opposition to one another. And you, when you create something good and you want people to go there, they certainly should have the right to protect themselves. Before I moved here to Haywood County, I did a little bit of research, as I would normally do, regarding the law enforcement community, and I will tell everybody in this room that we are blessed to have such fine law enforcement in Haywood County that... But everybody, every one of my brother and sister law enforcement officers, and yes, I am still sworn after 55 years in law enforcement, will tell you that the average armed confrontation takes place in 10 seconds or less. That's 10 seconds for somebody to be able to do something to protect you. That's 10 seconds for somebody to be able to do something to protect you. You have to ask yourself the question, would you rather have a citizen with a concealed weapons permit who has been vetted for criminal history standing near you with a firearm, or would you rather take out your cell phone, dial 911, and hope that one of our very able, trained, and experienced law enforcement officers are going to get there in 15 seconds? It isn't going to happen. I would put my life and my family's life in the hands of any of these people who I don't know, because they have a concealed weapons permit. And I kind of think we're going about this a little bit the wrong way. I think we should not be talking about codifying the current ordinance to comply with the state statute. I think we should talk about getting rid of it. And I think we should talk about following the lead of some of the other counties and have less restrictions for concealed weapon holders, not more. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our military for the job that they do, and our fine sheriff and his employees. I think they do a great job. However, if somebody intends me harm, they're much more likely to be investigating my murder than protecting my life. The response time isn't nearly as fast as my nine-millimeter. I do think that people have the right to carry or not carry as they choose. If they don't, then I hope that someone close to them does have a permit to where they can carry, because I'm a motorcycle rider, and if I go someplace, I can't get off and lock my gun inside my vehicle. It's not possible. If I get off my motorcycle, then technically, I am no longer inside my vehicle and can be charged under some of these ordinances. I would like to see a lot of these done away with, just because if these are passed, then they will limit my right to protect myself in a lot of places that I go, or I will have to limit where that I can safely go, protect myself, protect my family, and protect the people around me. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Peppers. Barry Peppers. This is, we've exceeded our hour, and this is the last person that signed up, so the timing was good, and we'll take a recess after this speaker, so the tape can be changed.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm a retired Air Force pilot and a retired commercial pilot, so I bring a different perspective. Spent over 30 years in the military. We never had a military airplane hijacked, because we carried guns. But I was flying a Boeing 737 in New York City the morning of 9/11, in a gun-free zone. How'd that work out? San Bernardino, Virginia Tech, Aurora, Columbine, Fort Hood, the D.C. Naval Shipyard, Chattanooga. What they all have in common? Gun-free zones. You guys get it. There's nothing else I can say, but we vote. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess, so the tape can be changed, and we'll return then with the county grounds use ordinance.